Should I go?
Yeah, you can.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We gotta get Bill on, don't we?
Well, how about it's?
Hi, Bill, you all set?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united in this bill with a reading justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community.
Mr. Smell?
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McCandrew?
Present.
Mr. Kanan?
Here.
There'll be a motion this evening to move item 6A to seventh order for a final vote. This ordinance updates the city's open burn policy. Anyone who would like to speak on this piece of legislation may do so in fourth order during citizens' participation.
I make a motion to take from the table file of the council number 26, 2023.
Second? There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table file of the council number 62 of 2023. This ordinance is the HUD 2023 Annual Action Plan. It is being taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote on the question. I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved. Mr. Waldenberg, would you please dispense with the reading of the minutes?
Third order, 3A, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Report, review July 13, 2023. 3B, Minnesota Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting held June 21, 2023. 3C, Minnesota Nonuniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held June 21, 2023. 3D, agenda for the Nonuniform Municipal Pension Meeting held July 19, 2023. 3E, overtime report for all departments as provided by City Controller received July 20, 2023 for the period January through July 2023. 3F, correspondence received July 20, 2023 from OECD regarding code enforcement report for January through June 2023. 3G, agenda for the Scranton City Planning Commission Meeting to be held on July 26, 2023.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
Yes, I just have one comment on item 3E. This is the overtime report from the City Controller. As I said last week, it appears that our June and July overtime from the refuse department has been up. Taking notice of June, it's over $40,000, which, or I'm sorry, as of July, it's over $40,000, so it's definitely an anomaly as this is $20,000 more than this has been per month over the last three years. That's all.
Okay. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a few of them. So, there's a couple of events coming up this weekend, and then there's some things going on in August, and we won't be here for the month of August since we'll be on a break, but this weekend will be St. Joe's Center Summer Festival, and that's going to be at Marywood. That'll be Friday through Sunday, Friday 4 to 10, Saturday 4 to 10, then Sunday 12 to 7. And then there'll also be the craft fair taking place at Naog. They're going to start off the morning with a 5K race. You could walk or run with that race, so if you want to sign up, there's still time to be able to do that. They're going to have volleyball, there's going to be a craft fair, so there's going to be activities all day long over at Naog Park that day. And...
There's going to be volleyball, there's going to be a craft fair.
And on Sunday, August 6, will be the Waldorf Park German Day, and that's always a great event to look forward to, so if you want to head over for some German food and music and a great time, that's going to be on Sunday, August 6. It's $8 at the door, children under 12 for free. And there's also going to be, I think it's their first year doing it, but there's going to be a Latino Fiesta at Naog Park on Saturday, August 5, and that's going to be from 12 to 7, and they'll have food vendors there and a lot of things going on then, too. That's all that I have.
Anybody else?
Yes, I have one. The second round of the Hometown Heroes banners are going up in North Scranton. There's going to be applications on August 6 at the VFW on Rockwell Ave from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Okay, I have a quick one. So, all of you know what the Victor L. Fury Society is, or at least most of us from Westside. They're not going to have a luncheon for August, which is unfortunate, but this Thursday, July 27, from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., they'll have their lunch, which will be chicken parmigiana or pasta and meatballs or half and half. Price for members, $12; price for non-members, $14. And that's all I have.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
Joan Hodawanitz?
Well, since this is the last meeting until September 5, I thought I'd talk about some things going on in August, as Dr. Rothschild did. The Friends of the Scranton Public Library will be holding their next book sale, August 28, which is a Monday through Sunday, September 3. It's at the marketplace at Steamtown on the second floor. It's a great way to buy books at a reasonable price, one or two dollars. Children's books are as cheap as a quarter, so please keep that in mind. And speaking of events supported by the library, the children's library is a great place to take your kids during the summer. A lot of times, you know, people say there's nothing for children to do. Well, let me run down some of the events for August. August 1, Tuesday, 10:30 a.m., a visit from the rail riders, and one of their players will be reading to the children. They ask that you call to let them know you're coming, 348-3000, extension 3015. But if you forget, come anyway, no child will be turned away. Then on Tuesday, August 8, at 6:00 p.m., here comes a fire truck, a visit from the Scranton Fire Department, and they'll get to explore a real fire engine, and the firemen will share some of their stories and teach the kids how to stay safe. So if you hear the air horn going off, that's the kids playing with it. And on Sunday, August 13, at 2:00 p.m., they're bringing in a juggler, Rob Smith, with all his amazing tricks. He will juggle five balls, clubs, fire torches, rings, and knives. That'll be fun. And then finally, on Wednesday, August 16, at 6:00 p.m., a visit from the Scranton Police Dog, the K-9 unit, and you know how kids love dogs. And the police will talk to them about the things they go through to protect the children and their families. Now, keep in mind, when you want to talk about hometown heroes, police and firefighters are right in the front lines, and it's great that they mix with the children, and the children learn to respect and know what these men and women can do for them, so this is a great thing. All of these events are free, okay? And kudos to the fire department and the police department for participating in events like this. I think it's wonderful. Do we have an update on the police union arbitration? Anything moving on that?
We do not.
Okey-dokey. How about the Park Pocket Park on Wyoming Avenue? I walk past it every day, I haven't seen much movement.
No, we haven't received an update either on that, not since the last one.
Yep. But I will say, I was greatly impressed to see in the paper the RFP for the audiovisual services and meeting space enhancement. I assume that means this place? That'd be wonderful. Hope somebody answers the RFP and gets selected, and I hope you can adjust the acoustics especially for the public caucuses, because we cannot hear you in the back, and that would be great. And Scranton considers consultant to address gang issue. I think it's great to be paying too attention to issues like this, but I think I would turn to people like the police chief and his officers for guidance on the best way to crack this puzzle. I don't know if consultants are the way to go or ask Chief Carroll and his people, how do we wrap our arms around this to get ahead of the power curve? I'm sure he would have some great ideas. Thank you. And have a wonderful August, and I hope when you come back on September 5, you got all the answers, like the status of the audit, the status of the pocket park, the status of the police union arbitration, and all the other events that have been hanging in the wind. Have a great day.
Thank you, Joan. Next up, Norma Jeffries?
Good evening, Council. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident, and I want to thank Dr. Rothschild for bringing up the activity that's going to be going on at Naog Park on Saturday, but I'd just like to expand a little bit on that, because I'm just so well-involved with it with the meetings, okay? I did bring some flyers down to City Hall, and I want to thank you, Frank, for putting the flyers up, and it is a butterfly effect family fun day and fundraiser at Naog Park on July 29, and it starts at 9 o'clock, like Dr. Rothschild said, with the race that starts at 9 o'clock, and there's vendors that are going to be there, and cheering squad, and jugglers and things. So we've been sharing this on Facebook among ourselves and with others, and one of the things that I received back, I received some comments back, that they asked me, what did that mean? What did it mean that it was an all-inclusive playground? So, you know, we get into our own little worlds that we don't think that there's others out there that cannot do what we can do, that we take for granted. So I looked it up, and just I'd like to read this to everyone, that an inclusive playground helps children of all backgrounds and abilities feel a sense of belonging by ensuring every child can fully engage with the equipment without limitation. An inclusive playground enriches play for everyone by providing a variety of sensory experiences that children of all ages can enjoy. So we're just looking forward to that on Saturday, to come out, if you see this flyer hanging around the city, you know, just make sure you come up to Naog and help us out. The second thing that I wanted to talk about tonight was the conversation that we've had about the neutral gender restrooms. According to Google, the mandate for neutral gender restrooms is not a federal or state regulation, it is an employer regulation. Therefore, if I am reading this correctly, the change was determined by the administration. I have no issues with the neutral gender restrooms. However, I do have a problem with how it's maintained, and I speak for each of us who use the public restrooms, and raising two sons, we know, and I'm not going to go into the details of that, but raising two sons, we know what that can be, any of us who have had sons. So my thing tonight, rather than the neutral gender restrooms, is the cleanliness of it, the cleanliness that we all have to use those restrooms. So I just ask and think if, as we use them, that we think about others, as we come out of them, that we leave it in a respectable condition, so that we all can do what we have to do without having to worry and be disgusted with the restrooms. And then the third thing that I wanted to talk about was Dr. Rothschild. Over the past months, references have been made regarding Dr. Rothschild using the title of doctor in her name. Each time it is mentioned, I get such an uneasy feeling. Why would the use of doctor cause such a concern to anyone? When you Google the use of the doctor title, it is quite clear that the use of doctor is permissible. Dr. Rothschild is a doctor of physical therapy, which she has addressed on numerous occasions. At no time has Dr. Rothschild represented herself as anything other than a doctor of physical education, physical therapy. A doctor of physical therapy cannot prescribe medicine or appear to write prescriptions, which Dr. Rothschild has said from her seat. A lot of studying went into Dr. Rothschild obtaining her degree, and under no circumstances would she put herself in jeopardy to use something that was not appropriate. She graduated from the University of Scranton, which is a very accredited school throughout the nation, so why would she put the University of Scranton in jeopardy by using something that's not permitted? And I do not take the, I do take the opportunity, I had to take the opportunity to address this issue, because as I sit there, I kept thinking, well, then I'm condoning what's being said if I don't say something. If I don't say something, I agree with the people that get up here and pass false information. So I went through it, and I'm thinking and thinking about, what does it mean to condone something? Condone something means that I agree with what the person is saying and I do not agree. So as I looked, I came across this statement adopted by Dr. Martin Luther King, and it said, "In the end, we will remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends. I consider Dr. Rothschild a neighbor and a friend, and I could no longer remain silent." So tonight, I'm saying, Dr. Rothschild, congratulations, and you use doctor whenever you want to. Council, enjoy your August off, and Lord willing, we'll all gather again here in August, September.
Thank you, Norma.
Thank you, Norma. Les Spindler?
Good evening, Council. Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner. Happy to see that this wall was finally painted, because they took the pictures down of all the mayors years ago, and all you saw was the white spots that were filled in. Now I see it's finally painted. It only took, I don't know how many years, but it's done. Wanted to be here last week, but I couldn't make it unfortunately, because I read in the paper, now we hired a firm from Philadelphia to do a study on Naog Park for the pool. Are we that inept in this city that we can't do anything without hiring people to do a study? Can't we just hire, put bids out to hire a pool company and tell them what you want, and they'll put a pool in? Why do we have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars on studies like we did on that ridiculous walkability study? So I just don't know why we, don't we have qualified people in this city that could do stuff like that? It just blows my mind. I mean, we just got out of distressed status, and we're throwing away money like it's growing on trees. It's ridiculous. We're just filling people's pockets with money, and the rest of the people in Scranton are taxed to death. Speaking of the walkability study, two weeks ago, Mr. Smell, you said, "You don't shop downtown because you're afraid you'll get hit by a car." Well, there's "walk and walk and don't walk" signs that help you walk across the street. Do you think putting up stop signs is going to make it safer? If you believe that, I have some swamp lanes in Arizona for sale. Next thing, I read the paper last week, it had the paving list, and I was told that North Rebecca Avenue was on their list, but I didn't see it. So is our street going to be paved, or isn't it going to be paved?
Willing fire. I'll double check. Mr. Waldenberg, take care of that, would you please? Thank you.
I will, sir.
Mr. Waldenberg, was that on a separate list?
There were two lists available. I'll check them both.
Because my corner, with all the rain we've had lately, that just keeps deteriorating more and more, and I keep getting, you can't walk down my front steps, you'll have wet feet. It's a couple inches down the bottom of my steps every time it rains, and in the winter, I have a skating rink. So if this isn't fixed soon, before you know it, the snow will be flying. I mean, it's ridiculous. All they have to do is, if they, they don't have to wait till the paving gets done, just temporarily come up and put something there, whatever. That's the way things are done in this city. Next thing, two weeks ago, Mr. Argentis spoke about some bridges that are in real disrepair, and when he spoke about, I go by almost every day, because I live in Tripp Park, the railroad bridge on Main Avenue. I brought this up to council years ago. The beams are so old, they're rusted, and there's actually holes rusted through the beams. I brought this up years ago, and to me, that doesn't seem safe. You got these bridges, the trains go over, they, these trains weigh tons and thousands of tons or whatever, and there's holes in the beams, and nothing was done then, so we'll see if anything is done now.
I'll report out in fifth order on that.
Okay. That's all I have, and have a good vacation, like, as the old song goes, "See you in September."
Thank you. Doris Kalaski?
Well, we can get one, too.
Doris Kalaski, Scranton resident. All right, I didn't think I'd get here today, so I'm really not too prepared, so bear with me, but one of the things I want to do, first, before I forget, is to wish you all a wonderful vacation. Now, second, Naog Park, there's movies going on up there now for the kids, and most people weren't aware of it, even the direct neighbors and everything, and when I talked to Bob about it today, it is on the board, the flashing sign up there, but he said that was actually the city's project, so I think maybe the city needs to advertise it more and get a schedule out there of which movies and what time and when they're going to be. Okay, the cards I gave you were from a man that I had met on an event I was at with Moms' Demand Action, and it was like a health fair last week, and he was doing the CPR and the Narcan and the defibrillator demonstrations, and I was over there learning from him, and we got to talking, and he lives in West Scranton, I believe, and he has, he's a pool and park consultant, and he does lifeguard, he's a certified lifeguard trainer, so, and he's a Scranton resident, so I asked him for his cards to give to you. Okay. Now, I couldn't make last week's meeting, but I did watch it on television, and I want to address some of the things, but one of the things I wanted to address, Norma addressed anyway, so I'm just going to put a little bit of a spin on them. First of all, the bathroom situation with the neutral gender bathroom, I almost find it funny, but it's, the bathroom out here, it's just a singular bathroom with no urinal or anything, and the door locks, so I don't know what Mr. Bigot Bolus was talking about at all, about people waiting outside your stall there. So that's number one. I was just so, so mad when I was watching it on TV. First of all, again, like Dr. Rothschild, doctor, I mean, that, Mr. Bolus is, I'm sorry, I hope he's watching, I'm hoping he's hearing me, because he's not only a bigot, but he's an ill-informed person. Anybody with a doctorate is a doctor. A physician's assistant can't do prescriptions, or can do prescriptions, I'm sorry, a physician's assistant can write prescriptions, and she's not a doctor. I mean, I don't know why he does this every single time he comes, but it just makes me furious. There's doctors of philosophy, there's doctors of religion, there's doctors of physical therapy, and there's doctors that are M.D.s and O.D.s. So, and it has no bearing at city council to begin with. Nobody's job has a bearing at city council, except their job at city council, so that's number one. The other thing I want to address to him is when he said how he was Catholic and the University of Scranton was not following the Catholic doctrine, so they should be paying taxes because they were, they have programs for the LGBTQ. Well, thank you, University of Scranton, for keeping your education educational, and thank you for keeping politics and religion separate, because that's what our country was founded on, check separation of church and state, and thank you for standing behind our LGBTQ community, and I just want to say to Mr. Bolus, if you're watching, be careful who you hate, because it may turn out to be somebody you love. And thank you, and have a wonderful vacation, and thank you for bearing with me all these whole season.
Thank you, Doris. Okay, Ron Elman?
Yes, hello, Council. You know, we need more Norma Jeffries, she's always so informative. Like, I didn't know about Ms. Rothschild. Congratulations, that's a wonderful achievement. I certainly advocate education. I found a number, if anybody's interested about the Eagle, if you want to complain or congratulate or anything, the conservation people have a toll-free number, and you can talk for one minute, and if anyone would like to write it down, it's 703-358-1980. I phoned and, I didn't use any bad language or nothing, but I informed them what I thought of the whole situation that happened. Last week, there was some conversation about the refuge trucks coming and going to the landfill and how long it took. One reason they get overloaded is unscrupulous management of properties, dump all this furniture and bedding and house cleaning on the street for them to pick up. These gentlemen shouldn't have to be liable for all this, instead of the owners of the property renting a dumpster. of the property renting a dumpster. This week, across the main block up, there's a ton of stuff sitting on the street, they didn't pick it up today. And around the corner, just like a city block from them, somebody dumped a load of old couches and stuff that been outside someplace for years, it's just trash. I don't know what to do about it, but it's, one thing is, the owners of the property just have to clean it up, not the city and the taxpayers. This seems to be a practice, especially around the college. If, I know, almost everybody has gone to the hospital or someplace and seen, when the students leave, it's bad around there. There's just furniture and junk all over the place. And these property owners should have to do it, not the taxpayers. But that leads to a question, who do you phone when you have a problem? We don't have any code office, we don't have any traffic office. Across the street from my house is a big empty lot where they tore down a house last year or the year before. The weeds are taller than I am, it's the city property. The code officer, I don't guess he ever comes down Main Avenue, Mr. Sunday, except that he manages to see a case of water on my porch, so, but he doesn't see a load, I'm talking about a load up the street from me, he doesn't see all these abandoned cars around my house that they say they addressed. He hasn't done nothing about a swimming pool, and there's a lot of little children in my neighborhood. There's nothing around the pool on Trump Street. This junk car been on the street five years, five years, and it's still sitting there. This is your, Mr. Kaloski. Traffic, they need some stop signs along North Main to impede the speeding cars. A man was slaughtered in front of my house, what more proof do you need than that?
Thank you, Mr.
I hope you all have a nice vacation. My finances are where I'm not going no place, though I was invited to Paris and Rome by my ex-boyfriends I used to play golf with. Thank you.
Thank you. Quickly, would you please give the address to Mr. Waldenberg? I know you brought this up once before, but there's a pool without a fence around it, right? Near you? There's a swimming pool with no fence in the yard, around it, correct?
I just kicked it near all.
I'm sorry. So, you've mentioned this more than once, you said that near you, near where you live, there's a swimming pool with no fence around the yard.
Oh, yeah.
So, could you please?
I didn't get the pool.
It's still there.
Could you give us?
I wouldn't complain.
Hey, 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 excuse me, excuse me.
No, that, thank you, I'm, I can take care of myself.
My neighbor's four little kids.
All right, okay. I'm just asking for the address of the home that has, doesn't have the fence.
All right, thank you.
Can you get that to Mr. Queera one time, or call when you get it? Thank you. Okay, Dakota Cardier? Could you please state your name and where do you live?
My name's Dakota Cardier, and I live in Lackawanna County.
No, are you a city resident?
Oh, yeah, I'm a city resident, Scranton. So, I came unprepared today, I just found out that this meeting was going on, but you know, the Lord said that there's nothing wrong with wise counsel, so I just wanted to state a couple of things and ask some questions on behalf of the homeless portion of the population out here. So, there has been, the past couple of weeks, some run-ins of officers coming and kicking people off private property, which is private property, I get that, but there have been statements from these officers talking about that there is going to be people that are along the river that live in tents and stuff, they're going to pretty soon be asked to leave, and they're going to be given two days to go with, and if they don't listen, like, they're just going to rip their stuff up and throw it in dumpsters. And my, my problem with that is that, I understand that it's part of the water, the water department's property, and up there is the railroad tracks, and then, then you have the Heritage Trail and everything, but for the most part, there is not much public property that these people could really go to, that they could actually reside at. And the places out here, like, that offer help, like, CIC and the shelter, and like, Friends of the Poor and everything, it's, it's just very, very hard when you have only room for 20 people that are men and six females, and in the midst of that, you only get 30 days if you're, if you're a residence, and then you can't stay there for 90 days. And then, you know, these programs that they offer, you have to be homeless for a year, and like, this and that, and the third, and you don't get in sometimes for two years, and, you know, they're saying they're offering all this stuff, but then there's such elongated times for help for these people, and there's like, no housing, and considering the way that inflation has happened, there's all this, them losing people with housing because there's not enough funding and everything, and, and I understand these things are happening, but my biggest question and concern is, is what do these people do in the midst of this when they honestly really don't have anywhere to go besides down by the river and the resourcefulness of, of that space that does provide some nature and shelter for people? I just, I was just really wondering, because it's a very big concern, and to put them in places like Lackawanna County, which is overflowed to start with, you know, there's not program, programs in there, like, once you're homeless, and I personally know, once you're homeless in the system over there, like, you will get lost in translation until way down the road they find a spot open somewhere for you. And, and that's also an overflow with rehabs and everything, is, is, there's a lot of overflow with all that right now, and there is a problem going on with people needing the places. So I was just wondering if there's any type of counsel I can get from you guys, if any way to go about this, or if there's any other, other ways that you guys could help.
So now you listed CIC and the shelter, Friends of the Poor, are these agencies helping to gain employment, to gain apartments, anything like that?
Well, we have CIC, there's places that are like, The Mission and UNC and the Friends of the Poor, and also, there's places that they can go to, like Outreach and Career Link and stuff, but even doing the midst of that, it's very, very, very complicated, and I personally know, to get employment, maintain yourself, to be hygienatively correct and everything, to go and continue your employment, and to also get residency here is kind of hard right now, and you know, there's a lot of help that's needed, and there's not enough help out there for people.
So are these groups and are these services helping to point you in that direction, to gain employment, to gain shelter?
No, no, see, I have employment, and I was in jail for like, 11 months, and then they finally got me into a program that only houses about 16, 16 residents, and like, you know, but, you know, then the turnover rate on that is all on the person, and when they're able to get out there and, and everything and move on from there, but the point is, is these places, these organizations are supposed to be helping in ways, and that's the reason why some homeless people can be treated the way that they're being treated, but also at the same time, too, the current fact is that there, there are a lot of times when people have money to go and do stuff and start paying their first month and stuff and ask for security, there's a lot of, oh, we don't have help with security right now or anything like that, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of help that's not being done.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for sharing your story and helping us with awareness, but your time is up, but thank you again.
All right, you asked me a question, that's why I kept going.
That's okay. We've exhausted the sign-in sheet, would anyone else like to speak? Okay, well, one of you can, yeah.
Yeah, so, my name, I got to back up a little, I'm getting to that. My name is Aunt Marquise, I'm a local musician, as well as a community activist. I've worked with all different kinds of organizations, I've worked with the NAACP, I've attended many different city council meetings all over Luzerne County, to, you know, discuss issues within the community, within the county. I know this is Lackawanna County, but...
Excuse me, are you a resident of Scranton though?
Yes, I am. I'm getting to that, I'm getting to that, sir. I'm getting to that, sir. So, so what I'm speaking on, as far as Lackawanna County, I came here to back up my buddy Dakota, because what he's saying is true. The police officers on the streets, they treat us like we're nothing. You understand? They're very disrespectful, that's one thing I'm going to say, they're very disrespectful, they don't want to hear us out, when they look at us, they judge us, but this is what I want to do. I want to bring some, am I too loud? Can I back up a little bit? Because I feel like my voice is like so loud.
Normally, it's an issue, but today it isn't with you, acoustics, but...
Right, right, you know what I'm saying? So, so I'm here just to bring some solutions, you understand? Where it starts is with the police officers and everybody judging us, that starts with us having problems, you know, like addiction problems and stuff like that, that's part of the main reason, and Dakota could probably vouch for this, that's part of the main reason why they're kicking us out of the pavilion. But if we had a rehabilitation center in this city, not traveling an hour away, not traveling two hours away, you understand, if we had rehabilitation in this city, that would help these homeless people get clean, that's part of the solution. Two, we need more space in the shelter, you understand what I'm saying? There's not enough space in that shelter, you got like, 10, 15 men all sleeping on top of each other, so that's a problem in itself, too. But this problem is outside of Lackawanna County. This problem is, is, you know, it is a part of the problem in the country. This is a part of the problem in the country, because people are moving from ghetto areas like New York, New Jersey, Philly, and they're coming into cities like this, trying to escape poverty. But then when we come here, we walk right back into it. You want to know why? Because they keep trying to tell us that we ain't got enough resources, we ain't got this, we ain't got that. Well, listen to the people, because the people are the ones who have the solutions to bring more resources, you understand? And don't judge a book by its cover, because the messenger, and it says this in the Bible, the messenger, God can use anybody, God can use a homeless man off the streets, I'm homeless right now, you understand? But I have a lot of influence. So, another thing I want to say is, I've been all, and I'm not making this about myself, but just to let you guys know that I'm serious about my work, I've been all on the news stations, I've been all in the newspapers, so I'm very well-known within the Luzerne County, you understand? Because I voice my opinion very well. Now, I can help get some resources out here, but I need you guys to work with me as the city council, to make it happen for these people, because what's going to happen is, if you guys don't listen to the homeless people, it's not just going to be three homeless people in this crowd, it's going to be like dozens of us coming up here to city council, and a lot of them are angry and upset, you want to know why? Because the police officers have no respect for them, and they, they fed up, I'm telling you. So I'm just here to spread light on that and bring some solutions. If you guys ever want to contact me, and we work together, we could talk after the city council, but that's all I got to say.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, Elaine Sporgo, and I'm a Scranton resident. In 2019, both City of Scranton and Lackawanna County, McDay Park closed their pools. A few weeks, oh, two weeks ago, McDay Park opened their new splash pad. I was to see it, it's very impressive, it's, it's more of the type that's at Montage Mountain, it has a lot of, I was going to say different things, that dump water. And in a couple of weeks, they're going to open their pool. City of Scranton wants to do another study, when they've done one just like a year ago, and they have done nothing to replace their pool. And I want to know why the city is not using the ARPA funding, the rescue plan funding, for a pool at Naog. I saw in the paper today that they're using some of that funding to resurface playgrounds at several different playgrounds in the city. So, why, maybe, Mr. Smearl can answer, why is it not using the ARPA funding for the Naog
You're asking me why they, why they're not using ARPA money for the pool? What we were told in the beginning was, low-income areas, they, they consider Naog Park a high-income area, so it wasn't supposed to be spent into that. But there, the pool is being funded in different ways, so the pool is happening, it's just not using ARPA money. Although, we do have access to ARPA money, we can, council as a group can take $7 million if you want, and, and put it right in the Naog pool tomorrow, but why would we do that when we, when we have funding available to us to do a different, take a different path and use that money for something else?
I can't believe that they are going to be considered a high income when the city, entire city is like 23 or something like that percentage in poverty, you're going to have the whole city.
Elaine, Elaine, excuse me, I'll answer your question. So, we were initially told by administration that ARPA funds could not be used out of the lost revenue track to fund the pool. All right, we were told that. But then when ARPA came in, I'm sorry, answer came in, the group that handles, I asked that question, could we have used? And they told me yes. So, we could, we could have used it, we were just told we couldn't. That's to simply answer your question.
So why are you not using it? Is all those 63 million gone? Because I've only seen a few million listed in the projects that were, that were described as being funded and so forth.
Well, that's, not all the money's gone, no, but, but to simply answer your question, we could have used it, we were, we were told we couldn't.
I think to just speak and maybe bridge the gap. I think to bridge the gap between Mr. McCandry and Mr. Smearl is, funds have been earmarked for certain projects, they had to be earmarked by a certain deadline, but there was a little bit of confusion in the beginning, but like Mr. McCandry said, but also like Mr. Smearl said, there is a possibility for us to use that, so it is something that's still on the table.
Okay, that's good. The other thing sort of follows up in the last two speakers, and like, I've been doing some research on what the ARPA fund could be used for, and one of the things was for affordable housing. And if you've been following the, any of the housing listings, but in about the past two or three years, the prices of property have gone up about 50% in the city. And now that the city is finally doing their, their tax reassessment, I'm concerned that more people are, that especially older people are going to get pushed out of their property, and the city has, has like, no, really, like, low income, it has, you know, like, public housing, but the city, you know, as opposed to like, other cities have, say, condos, you know, it's kind of a step between apartments and a house, and they're generally like, more affordable than, than houses are. The city has, has really no... The city has, has really no, um, you know, maybe there's a few, I guess, you know, like two places in the entire city that has condos. And, um, you see a lot of, uh, developers now that are, are putting what they call luxury apartments, uh, remaking like buildings downtown or like the Perotti building. Um, they call it luxury apartments, really just a regular apartment with a granite countertop, and they call it luxury apartments. But they're like very expensive apartments, and the city has like no, um...
Thank you, Eileen.
Really, no middle ground. Okay, well, I just wanna know if that's being addressed in, in any ways, any of the, the funding being considered for affordable housing? Is that even an issue that, that the city has, has considered?
There are various housing programs, uh, through the Office of Economic and Community Development, and then, um, there's, and we've also partnered with Neighbor Works, so there are some programs through them too. There's first buyer home programs, there's programs out there for older adults looking to rehab their houses. So, there are various programs, but we do need to do a better job of creating more affordable housing in the city, because it is definitely a problem.
And especially with the way that the prices have gone up. Well, thank you very much.
I think another thing would be to upkeep some of the homes that, and rental properties that are already out there as well.
More time, I'd ask you, would the city plans to do anything about the, um, you know, the, the seniors that are gonna have their price of property taxes issued up? Um, the city has claimed, when they were finally approved, the, um, I'm not sure if it's actually the city or the county that approved it, but, um, to do the tax reassessments that they said they're always gonna have programs to help seniors stay in their homes, but I have not heard anything on any programs being developed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom Coymanuka. Well, as we near our little month-long break here, I wanted to take a look back, and I'm slightly concerned when I take a look at things like 8B, the overtime reporting. How a good thing gets moved forward, then it goes into the back room where there's an executive session and a discussion between the administration and this body, and then it sits there and it dies, because someone in a decision-making meeting that wasn't open to the public decided that, for whatever reason, it's not to move forward. I don't understand that. Usually when there's a meeting that's for decisions, it's supposed to be public. It's not supposed to be secret and hidden. We're supposed to hear it and understand how it impacts the city. I don't know why overtime is such a big thing that we need to hide and not document overtime like that's a good thing. Now, moving on to 6A, the legislation on burning. I've looked at it, I've reviewed it. Beforehand, we had Dr. Rothschild step forward when this came forward and said, she understands why this shouldn't be, because protests are organic in nature. They happen, they don't have two days' advance notice. Mr. McCandry stepped forward and said, he remembers a time in the sixties when burning bras were part of the national protest for women's rights. Back when our country was first set out, the British flag was burned as part of our independence and the birth of our country. You may not like burning flags or burning objects in protest, but there's a long history of them being allowed. But there's also a conflict with restrictions on how that can be done, and restrictions on First Amendment rights of having to step up beforehand and be allowed by a government to have your First Amendment, uh, First Amendment right. I also call forth that about a month ago, there was a mention of this in an executive session, 3202, 2022 CV 101172, was brought up on record. There was an executive session because of a legal issue with burning, with the burn ordinance. Well, burn ordinance, I went over to, uh, the Globe Store, the old Globe Store, and checked in civil and I could not find it. Well, the reason I couldn't find it, cause it wasn't to deal with the burn ordinance. It was in federal court to deal with the flag burning that happened in front of the courthouse. For some reason, this has been hidden and put away, and it seems that the law department is putting forth laws rather than city council. The executive session is usually done because there's something in process. Well, the case that was in mention was withdrawn on 316 of 2003 by the parties. So this is not a court settlement, this is an agreement behind doors here at City Hall. I don't know the full scope of it or the pressure on it, but this, after being voted down, not only has it come back up, but for some reason tonight here, it's even fast-tracked to keep people from looking, looking at it. There's absolutely no reason to fast-track it, other than it doesn't wanna be under observation. I went down to the federal court and I pulled the documentation from the, from the courthouse, uh, from the federal building. I understand this gentleman has done this in a number of different communities with burning Trump flags or other protests, and has updated the laws. Has this body had a chance to intervene in the laws, to look at what was created? Has our city councils, legal staff, did he have interactions in this to design this law that comes before the body? It smells of a back-room deal, and I'm not really sure an executive session for a case that was already withdrawn was even proper. Something's wrong with this right from ground zero, and when it goes through tonight, it's gonna be an unfortunate thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virgil Argenta. Seventy million dollars. Imagine what we can do in each individual neighborhood by developing neighborhood impact teams, where every neighborhood is represented as to the needs of the specific neighborhood. Seventy million dollars. Imagine the difference that we could make with seventy million dollars if it was spent properly. Imagine, seventy million dollars. Imagine if we had representatives from the fire, police, code enforcement departments come into each neighborhood and make educated decisions, with each neighborhood deciding what desperately needs to be done to improve the neighborhood and maintain our property value. Imagine. Imagine what could be done. Imagine if rather than one person making decisions on how to spend money, it was the city as a whole working together. Imagine if we put the money to good use. Look at the city of Pittston. Every single dime that they acquire is invested into their city, and the city shows. There are no two-page mayor spreads in their local newspaper. Their mayor, their mayor needs no publicity. His work speaks for itself. Imagine what would happen in Scranton if Scranton did that. Seventy million dollars. Imagine what we could do. Look at Mr. John Basiligo, what he's doing with his own money. Every property that he touches enhances the neighborhood and enhances the city. Imagine where he would direct revitalization. Seventy million dollars. What if we did that in every neighborhood with the seventy million dollars? Imagine if every citizen in Scranton had the ability to state what was wrong in their neighborhood in ways they thought we could change and make improvements in their individual neighborhoods where they pay taxes, the investors in the city. Imagine. Imagine if politics did not come into play. Imagine what a difference we could make in Scranton from someone who was actually born and raised here and actually cares about the city. Where it heads in the future. Imagine what we could do with that seventy million dollars, just imagine. Imagine one million dollars if it wasn't spent to tell us how to run the DPW. Imagine. Imagine if people actually did their jobs and were competent people, and we hired competent people to head up each department. Imagine that. Seventy million dollars was put to good use, as opposed to being squandered away by that one person? Imagine not worrying about which flag to fly, or what to do with bathrooms and who to use them. Imagine if you made decisions and you fought to change things that would be here for a lifetime. Instead, in Scranton, we have three council people that are single-handedly destroying this city. You're a different branch of government, you're doing someone else's agenda. For example, the parking garage for Guy Singer. Imagine if you three made hard decisions to not follow someone else's agenda, and you actually made the tough decisions for the generations to come in the city of Scranton. Imagine that. How are we making out with the porta labs down at Weston Field? Do we have porta sinks yet? And are any of those bathrooms porta labs, are they neutral gender? How about the bridge report? Do we have a bridge report yet? Thank you.
Sorry, Virgil, I'll speak to that in a fifth order.
Appreciate that. Do we have porta labs? For the porta labs, the porta sinks for the porta labs at Weston? And whatever happened to shower before you entered a pool and shower after you leave the pool? Can we, can we do that at Weston, Weston Field? I'll give you these pictures real quick.
Thank you.
This happens to be the park at the North Scranton Little League. That after today's article, it would have you think that it was a, uh, Taj Mahal and the jewel of the city. There has been no work done on that park for the last two months. And the permit says twenty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars. The article in the paper says it was forty thousand dollars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Marie Schumacher, East Mountain, Scranton. Got a couple of things to think about over the other month off. The Sorrenti place. We don't have any feedback on what's really happening there, and I think we should. Now, I know, uh, Mr. McCandry, you were up there in January when they were getting, uh, what was it? A immersive simulation system.
I, I was not, ever.
Oh, okay. The paper said you were. It was Milo, multiple interactive learning objective. But anyway, uh, that was to come in, and it said the training system would be available for other police agencies in the region as well, and that was by the, uh, police chief. And earlier, the mayor has said what was in, in, um, support of the Sorrenti, that it would be open for the area and a lot of, uh, activity there was going to be seen, and there would even be some revenue. Now, have we had any revenue come in for what's done at Sorrenti?
That I don't know of. Uh, there is, three weeks ago, I asked for an update on the Sorrenti Center. I know in the capital budget, there's either two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand or three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars that is, should be spent there, or allocated to be spent there in the 2023 year. So if we could ask for someone to come in, it's been quite some time since we got an update on that. The last time someone was here in person, I feel like Eileen Cipriani let us know that some of the grant funding had stalled, and that's my last recollection, so it's about time that we do hear an update on Sorrenti.
Yeah, I think it should be on a regular basis. We shouldn't have to request from this podium. Okay, and then, um, stormwater. Do we, are we just kicking that can down, downstream again? Or do we have a goal for when we are going to actually do something about stormwater? Or wait for, uh, an authority to be made with other communities?
Well, we had an update, uh, I think you were here. And we're waiting for the other municipalities either get on board or not before we move forward.
Is there a deadline for that, so we can move forward?
Uh, we'll, we'll get you the deadline, we'll try to find that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wallimer, check on that, would you please?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and I thought too, on the three E, uh, what kind of action is going to be taken by the, by what's on the overtime? And who's, who's in charge of doing that? Is it the administration?
Now, if it's the overtime that I spoke of, it would be the, it would be the refuse coordinator who would be in charge of that overtime. That's the meeting that we've been looking forward to, um, to get an update on how that's going. As you can see, those overtime costs monthly are going up, so there's definitely some changes that have occurred there, and I'm very curious to hear what's going on.
So are a lot of taxpayers, yes. And the, uh, the Harrison Avenue Bridge area, I believe it's another, uh, government agency that has that from the time when you're, and when you're going east on there, between the first building and, and the bridge. It's very frequently over, well over the six inches of, of being cut. And whose responsibility is that, and why is that allowed? And, and then, you know, Joe Schmo and their home gets a ticket for having lawn over six inches.
That's PennDOT's responsibility, and I've brought that forward to them numerous times. It's supposed to be on their regular maintenance list, however, um, we usually have to put forward a complaint before it'll get cleared out, and then it takes some time for them to do that.
Wow.
So, um, I, I did notice as well that it's, um, that it's creeping up again, so we will reach out to them again to get out there to, to clear it.
And what about that building, the first building when you're going to the east? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm out of time.
Yeah, that first building, I, I know that you're, you're talking about. There was a condemnation of one of the apartments in that building, not the entire building, but I think, um, that since has been, has been rectified or reversed, because the signage is no longer posted.
I, yeah, okay, thank you. I, I'd just like to say, I think enforcement, we've gotta, we've gotta start doing enforcement on the codes, that, uh, wall down in front of the Radisson, which looked like it was going to fall into the, into the street, of course, did, because nothing was done about it. And now we've lost part of, a lane down there on one of the main streets. Uh, I don't know, enforcement has to be given more, more, I guess, just time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Dave Dawson, Scranton. Last week, uh, I saw a little light coming from up there, Mr. Smurl. I, uh, did appreciate the fact that you pointed out that homeless people are people. And we have a lot of problems in our country. Our jobs were handed out years ago, and most of the politicians address it. But not everybody can be a rocket scientist or an aviation engineer, or whatever, so. That being said, I was, uh, a union steward over two-hundred-and-fifty people. So that being said, I was a union steward over 250 people. And when I see somebody I, that's homeless, I start thinking, gee, you know, that looks a lot like somebody whose job was just handed out years ago with an excuse like you can go to school or do some, who pays the bills while you go to school? We really need to pay more attention to fellow Americans and bring them up. Dr. Rothschild, I sympathize with you with a lot of the guff you take. I don't see, I would have my head examined if I started getting obsessed with how to go to the bathroom. I mean, that's possibly a sign of onset dementia. Anyway, minimum wage, you're never going to get $15 an hour minimum wage in the near future. And, but I know people, I see people walking to work at stores that I shop with up in Southside. And the one person I talked to, she's 42 years old, she's a widow, they gave her a whole quarter. So she makes $7.50 an hour now. Things are really up, looking up. You know, it's, it's just amazing. The reason these people are walking to work is because they, they're 23 years old and they might have to borrow mom or dad's car just to get there. And mom or dad might need their car. They're still living at home. They can't get their life started, can't get married, can't afford housing. And it's just one big, one big problem. Anyway, our railroad out in Bradford County, there's an LPG plant compressing gas to liquid petroleum gas. Its permit has been renewed. In about three years, you might have 100 cars. Each one, each 12 cars is the same explosive force as the Hiroshima bomb. And we also have smaller cars shipped past to you, to Toby Hannah. I've seen them up there on one of my rail excursions. And to get down to the new downtown, I don't see it as a working situation. It, it's just, I have read and reread the articles in the paper and I might attend a meeting, but it would be just to critique it. I think we should have more stop signs and stoplights like we have up. And last week I went to Jefferson Avenue via Linden Street and I sat there for a little while at a red light and then the lock sign came on. And it's no left turn or no, no turn on red. It's a right turn that you can make. Sorry about that. But people need more time to get across the street. There's three people that I know have lost their lives at Wyoming and Lackawanna and they all may have been buses that hit them. And if you really think of driving a bus with all those doors in the way and the A-pillar in the way and the visibility, you're up off the road so you won't see some little short person trying to sneak across there. So hopefully we'll abandon that plan and thank you and have a good night and a nice little vacation.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, anybody else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Smurl, do you have any motions or comments?
Just one comment. This weekend, we, we had a crew downtown. We were cleaning the downtown up and Mr. Waldenberg, I forgot to forward this to you. On the courthouse square, they put all their garbage out. I believe the people told me they put it out on Friday, but it's not picked up on Monday. Will you inquire and see if, if that's true? And if they can maybe put out on a Monday because it winds up all over the courthouse.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Is that all? Okay. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
I do have a few. I have two addresses, if I can give you Frank, to send over to code enforcement. It's the rear 835 Beach Street is one. And the other one is 539, 541 North Garfield. And I could send you some more, more details on those later on tonight.
Thank you, sir.
I planned on speaking to this one in seventh order. However, today at 3:47, I got a response to my request from last week. So we do have a study on the agenda tonight in seventh order for final passage. It's give or take $70,000 study. This was taken from some money that was dedicated towards mental health originally. I would have liked to have seen that money going into the, the mental health area as it was originally allocated for. But what I found out through the backup information was that this company had done a similar study the previous year. In August of '22, this study was presented to the city and I made a request if I could see this study. It took some time to get back to me. The administration actually spoke to the newspaper several times rather than responding to my request. But I did get an answer today at 3:47 and it stated that in the best interest of public safely, safety, the Muffulhon Report is available for viewing at City Hall by a member of City Council upon request. Please call the City Law Department to arrange for review of the same, during the same business hours. And it gave a phone number for me to call to review the document. I would like to make a motion tonight that the City Law Department release a copy of the Muffulhon Initial Assessment Report from August of '22. If I could get a second on that.
Second.
So this would be a motion for the Law Department to release a copy of this report to City Council.
All those in favor? Signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Thank you. The next, oh, sorry.
Two, two, motion passes. Oh, no, three, sorry, never mind.
Three, two, passed.
Just open, I guess. All right. Anything else?
Yes. So I also had a, a request in, there was a group, Red Basket of NEPA, that received, according to the Controller's Report, they, they received a piece of money that was allocated to community centers. So to start, there's several community centers located in and around Scranton, well, in Scranton. These centers are city properties that are run by volunteer groups and neighborhood associations. These groups in turn maintain that city property. So the work that they do on these properties is work that city employees don't have to do and it's a service for the city. So I commend anyone that's part of a neighborhood association or anyone that helps to maintain a community center in the city. Last week, when inquiring about this allocation, a nonprofit received money from the community center line item in the 2023 budget. So this funding was intended to assist community centers with building repairs and other needs that they had. Although this group does provide a service, I, I do think it's a mistake that we've been redirecting this money. OECD has redirected this money away from community centers and possibly their operating expenditures. So I, last week I did ask for a request of the justification for this. I just received the MOU with the group. So Frank, could we send out another request for justification of why a nonprofit was given money from the community center line item? Thank you very much. That is all.
Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I have a few. Once again, this, this week, we've been receiving complaints about the garbage pickup being off or people not receiving the pickup. And last we'd inquired about it, I've been told that they were aware of the issue and fixing it, but it doesn't seem to be fixed just yet. So I still have concerns and so there's the thought that this might have to do with the Rubicon implementation. And I understand with implementation of new programs that there can be some growing pains associated with that and errors and things that need to be corrected. But it's, it's like the same streets that are still not being picked up and that's what, what I'm not understanding why it's not corrected yet. So the, we received another email about 1700, 1800, 19 blocks of Clearview Street. And then I know Councilman Smurl also mentioned some of the garbage that was not picked up. And then there are other places today that I saw that hadn't been picked up yet, like driving along Music Street. So just would like to get a better update of what's happening with the, the garbage pickup and, you know, why streets are being missed still and if that's going to become timely again because we're not back until September. Supposedly Rubicon is going to be coming in at that point, but I would like to not wait until then for this to be resolved.
I'll inquire, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And I'd also received a complaint from 733 Brook Street and it was someone who had received a violation letter, letter of something on their property and they had some questions about the letter and the complaint and they contacted a couple of different people in code enforcement. They still have not received a response. So I'm going to forward that email because I'd like to get them a response so they could, so it could be clarified on, on the issue I hand.
I'll clarify that.
They also did mention that when they went to the website, to the appeals page, that the link was broken for it and, and not working. So if we could have IT work on repairing that link so people could properly access the appeals.
I will.
Thank you. And Councilman Smurl and I both met with Chief Carroll earlier and we had a good, good conversation, a good starting point to address the issue of, of the homeless population within the city of Scranton. And, you know, I certainly do feel for the people who are homeless and we're not unique in this problem in our city. It's a problem throughout the country and I don't know that anyone has, you know, figured out the best way to solve it, but it doesn't mean that we can't do anything either. I, you know, do certainly agree that the, you know, police should be respectful of people when, in the community and the homeless community. Chief Carroll did assure us that they are being respectful and handling it in, in the best possible way and that they're not targeting people, but that they are just working to address when crimes or complaints are brought to them. And, you know, like drug, drug prevention and trespassing if people are on private property. So those issues, they are working to address and not, you know, there's, they're not going to just kick people out of their tents or take away their, their things. So that was what we were informed of earlier. And so I hope that, you know, is what continues to, to happen moving forward. And I, I know that the, we are pretty limited in the shelters and some of the resources that we have. So I, I do agree that we need more shelters and we need more, more opportunities to help get people out of being homeless. And I'm interested in, in seeing what way we could, we could help as a city to do that. I don't have a clear answer on that tonight or, or the best solution for it, but it is certainly a priority of mine and I really appreciate the people who came here tonight to, to voice their, their concerns. Thank you.
Okay. Well, Mr. King is on, on the phone. Mr. King, I mean, I'm going to read, I'm going to be reading his responses that he normally does in fifth order because it's just going to be a lot easier. But in addition to that, Mr. King, do you have any comments that he would like to say or motions?
No, nothing, nothing at this time. I appreciate you making comments for me.
No problem. So, no problem, Billy. All right. So these are answers to questions that were posed last week or, or the week before. So for Joan Horta Wanas regarding the $1,500 professional services expenditure for the law department, Deputy Solicitor Andrew Cattulo was reimbursed for membership in the Public Rights Project Affirmative Leaders Fellowship 2023. This is an approved expense for the city controller. Okay. Then, Council meeting on July 8th, Mr. Leonard Sebro of North Dewey Avenue visited Council Chambers again and voiced his concerns related to the flooding to his neighboring properties during heavy rains. He advised that the flooding is now worse and due to additional runoff. He had great praise for Steve Teeman and his crew with DPW that visited the property that cleared the drainage. He emphasized that this is quick and though action by Steve and team were first, was the first time in over 10 years that the city had worked, opened the pipe completely. So, well, it, it hasn't been 10 years because we got a response, DPW has done a lot of work with this section. A DPW employee has met with the resident and has pictures and a map of the potential issue. DPW has plans to camera the lines this weekend, 7:28, to pinpoint the elbow that was installed without engineering approval. Once DPW can locate the position of the issue, DPW can recommend a permanent fix. DPW and engineering will need to determine whose property the elbow is located on and acquire the proper permits and engineering for the fix. So that's an answer to that one. Mrs. Schumacher, she had concerns about the City Hall front steps repair project. So this project is slated to go out to bid before July ends. So to answer your question. The concrete barrier at Biden Street interchange, following up a PennDOT for a date when the concrete barrier at Jefferson Avenue and Biden Street will be updated. The interchange is presently one lane due to the mural update project taking place this week. Meadowbrook Flood Project. So council asks per residence request for an update on the RP for legal appraisal services related to securing the property of 44 right of way agreements. So the answer we received was proposals from prospective vendors have been submitted. No contract has been awarded yet. Mr. Virgil Argenta on the Theodore Street Railway, Railway Bridge. Riley Associates, the city engineer advised, the PennDOT District Bridge Engineer has advised, they're working with Norfolk Southern Regional Railway Bridge Supervisor and they completed a bridge condition assessment and an action plan for the span. So we're waiting to hear on that. So made the public schedule a tour of the public safety building at Sorrenti Center. Council is awaiting an answer and specifics from the fire chief. Somebody asked about trash pick, trash pickup at the St. Anne's Novena. DPW confirmed that there is no trash pickup by the Department for St. Anne's Street Novena. So in fact, they have a private holler. The DPW is not picking up their garbage, so someone asked about that. Scram Police Department Staffing Council President Bill King asked if the SPD may confirm that adequate staffing levels are evident of the police force. Has SPD been short-staffed at any time in the recent past? The question was posed by a city resident. The responses the City of Scram Police Department has had and continues to have adequate shift staffing. Weston Field Bath House. Council has asked if OECD Department has advised status on the repair renovation repair project proposed for Weston Field Bath House recently inspected for the deterioration realized at the building. Parks and Recs have referred all questions to OECD. So what we, the response we got is a comprehensive Weston Field strategy is being developed. Code enforcement inspections in revenue, open gov report for code enforcement is in third order on this evening's meeting agenda. List of city vehicles, the city resident, Mr. Virgil Argenta, asked council for a listing of all city-owned vehicles. As previously shared, please have Mr. Argenta, this is the response we got, have Mr. Argenta complete a write-to-know request for this information. Well, I, we talked about this earlier, Mr. Waldenberg. Even though Mr. Argenta asked for it, and I get that, that he might have, a resident asked to do a write-to-know, but in turn, President King asked for the list. So he doesn't need a write-to-know. So could you remind the legal department that that request came from the president?
I'll revisit it tomorrow.
Thank you. Any additional questions posed by Mr. Argenta pending a response from the city administration? John Thomas, the former Plotkin Building. The Plotkin, Plotkin Building on Penn Avenue and Linden Street was sold to DFM Incorporated in 2022. The Plotkin Building on Penn Avenue and Linden Street was sold to DFM Incorporated in 2022 for $425,000. No plans are in process at present. However, Mr. Don Memeno of DFM Properties advised he would like to develop a mixed use of shops and apartments for that property. So that's an answer to that question. Code enforcement electric vehicle fleet, Councilman Tom Schuster asked the following questions. Has any maintenance been necessary at the electrical, electric vehicles to date? How long does an average battery charge last on the vehicles based on their performance to date? Our response from administration was the electric vehicles have not required maintenance. Charges last approximately two weeks or 200 to 250 miles. Lastly, this was my request. Councilman Mark McCandless asked per residence request that the administration please advise an update from OECD and city engineer on the rehabilitation of Oakmont Park as it relates to the recently approved contract. Mr. McCandless said the neighbors to the park were advised that the work would start this summer. Please be advised, the answer we got, that the playground equipment is ordered for Oakmont and engineer is completing project design. The project was tentatively scheduled for fall installation, pending equipment delivery. General contractor's contract has not been awarded for this park. Western, no, I'm sorry. North Washington Avenue rescind permit parking on the block. The petitioner rescind permit parking in the 1,300 block of North Washington Avenue was mailed. The petitioner will visit all households on the block for signatures. The subsequent study will be handled by the SPT, I'm sorry, the Scram Police Department Traffic Division. Okay. 6B, intergovernmental agreement of cooperation with the city and the Scranton School District. Councilman Mark McCandless had an initial question on this legislation, asking into which entity pension plan the employee would be enrolled in. So the employee will be enrolled in the city pension plan instead of the districts. All right. So this is, this is also speaking to what Mr. Schuster said. So the MUFALI initial assessment report of 2022, August of 2022, that you requested over a week ago, right? You know, your email is from July 18th, actually. So, so the response that we got from, a councilman asked to see this, wants us to vote on another study but won't show us the study from last year. This is absurd. Absurd. So what you have to do is, in the best interest of public safety, the MUFALI report is available for viewing at City Hall by a member of City Council upon request. Please call the City Law Department, blah, 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 blah. So we got this while everybody's on the way to the meeting, with nobody in the building to view it before we take a final vote. That sounds, it sounds like it's intentional to me. Sorry. All right. Rubicon. Council President Bill King and council respectfully ask that administration please include counsel on the response to Controller Murray's queries related to the contract with Rubicon. Email is attached to assist. Administration has received this request and will respond in the near future. Another waiting game there. So all I have to report out is, and it's some good news and bad news for the people at Western Field that swim there. It's unfortunate. So when we, when we were, when the new parks director was introduced as a hire or to be voted on for us, you know, they wanted to waiver for him. We said, no. Or I did. No, I think we all did that because he promised to move in the city, whatever. But between the first vote and the second final vote, I asked the question, because this was, this was concerns for the lovely ladies that swim there and don't get consistent hours there because of the lack of lifeguards. So I posed a question to the new parks director, and it's in an email, and I have it here. And the question was, you know, will you get certified too because your office is there? So in the winter months, when we lose all the students that are lifeguards, you know, if there's any interruption with that, maybe you can fill in. And he said, I'll be getting certified to become a lifeguard. This will occur when my lifeguards all become certified. It will, I will be taking the course with them. The date is to be determined, but should be within the next two weeks. That was, that was in June. All right? So I'm happy, the good news is they have 25 certified lifeguards through this program, and four of them are still in process. So, but like I said, we're going to lose half of them or more than, we lose almost all of them when these students go back to school. The bad news is, we, when we asked this question again last week, the new parks director says, no, he will not be getting certified. He is going to focus on the parks. So I took him on his word. That's why I gave him a final vote, but it's unfortunate. I'm very upset about that. And that is all I have.
5B, no business at this time. Sixth Order 6A, reading by title, filed a council number 80, 2023, in ordinance, amending the city's open burn prohibition to explicitly allow an exception for public demonstration under certain conditions.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move back item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I did some research on this, and I read where the United States Supreme Court had ruled that flag burning constitutes a form of symbolic speech that is protected by our First Amendment. I don't agree with that, but that's their ruling. I would not ever burn a flag, but if we do not amend this ordinance to comply with the Supreme Court ruling, it could put the city and our residents, we can be liable for a lawsuit such as the one that the city of Cleveland had to, they agreed to pay Gregory Johnson $225,000 to settle a claim that officers retaliated against him for an exercise of free expression, which was burning a flag at a protest. So my, I will be voting in favor of this because I don't see any reason for us to expose ourselves to any liability.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, on the question, we did get some sort of an answer. I think I asked to justify this, this ordinance, and the answer that I got, although they said it was trying to shore up the legislation so that we were in compliance, I really didn't feel that the answer, I guess, I wasn't satisfied with the answer, so I will be voting no.
Anyone else?
On the question, as was mentioned earlier, I did express concerns with this legislation previously, which is why I voted no for it in reference to burning flags for protests and how, you know, protests sometimes happen without that notice. And we did receive additional information from the law department that, that I really would have preferred to have prior to that vote because that would have then changed my vote, which is, you know, one of the reasons that I would be voting on it today. And I do agree that it would put us at a liability based on the legal advice that we had been given and that we were informed that, you know, it would be a specific time, having like specific places that, or I'm sorry, a specific time that this could take place. And additionally, it also has to deal with public safety. So there have been other times where there are ceremonies where the flags are burned and the fire department is notified and a firefighter would, would go to that to just make sure that everyone is safe while that's taking place and that no one's harmed with that burning. So, you know, I feel like, for me, the public safety piece is important and makes more sense as to why this was brought forward. So that's all I have to say on that.
Anybody else?
On the question, based on the information we received from our assistant city solicitor, I will be voting in favor of this, this evening.
Okay. On the question. So this has been brought forward to us twice. I don't, I don't like how it came down the second time. I can't speak too much about why because it was a discussion in the back room. All right. But my opinion hasn't changed from the first time it was introduced to the second time it was introduced. I would never burn a flag. Are you kidding me? But I don't believe, I think this puts us more at liability, making someone make a reservation, fill out forms to protest, to burn something, maybe not the American flag, maybe even another flag, whatever. So I think, I don't agree with the legal department saying that this, this makes it better for freedom of speech. I disagree. I think, I think, I can't, I can't vote yes for this because I worry about legal ramifications down the road. So with that, I'm definitely voting no again. I'm sticking to, to my no. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. The ayes have it and so moved.
So I make a motion to suspend the rules to move item 6A to seventh order for final passage.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to move 6A to seventh order for final passage. On the question, all those, I'm sorry, on the question. We already been down there. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
No. The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, filed a council number 76, 2023, establishing a no right turn from North Main Avenue to Pond Avenue, no left turn for trucks from Pond Avenue to North Main Avenue, separate the intersection of Pond Avenue and Dean Street via line striping to improve traffic operations and safety.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A, second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes. I hereby declare that item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, filed a council number 77, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an intergovernmental agreement of cooperation by and between the city of Scranton and the Scranton School District for the creation and employment of the shared community development coordinator position.
As vice chairman for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, filed a council number 78, 2023, revising traffic patterns on Marion Street to one-way traffic westbound from Wyoming Avenue to Penn Avenue, revising traffic patterns on Marion Street to one-way traffic eastbound from Wyoming Avenue to North Washington Avenue, restricting eastbound Marion Street traffic approaching North Washington Avenue to right turns only, and restricting westbound Marion Street traffic approaching North Washington Avenue to right turns only for vehicular and pedestrian safety.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, filed a council number 79, 2023, ratifying the execution of time-sensitive temporary construction easement agreements between affected city of Scranton property owners in the city of Scranton to complete the Federal Emergency Management Agency projects in accordance with FEMA debris removal construction plans, which are to be completed by the deadline of December 31st, 2023, as amended.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7D as amended.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, a couple of things to point out here. These projects come from the 2018 flood situation that we had with excessive rains that year. The word "time-sensitive" was used. These projects go back to 2018. We did get an extension this year, so the time sensitivity they're talking about is during council break. I'm going to recommend that the administration start getting these things to council in a timely manner. I'm not going to hold this up because these people have been waiting, especially the two that are on here today. But, Mr. Voldenberg, can we ask how many of these projects are left because the deadline is December of this year?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes. I hereby declare that item 7D as amended legally and lawfully adopted.
7E, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 274, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Pennsy Supply, Inc., to provide paving services for the city of Scranton for the fall of 2023 through the spring of 2024.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7P.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes. I hereby declare that item 7E is legally and lawfully adopted.
7F, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 275, 2023, reappointment of Reverend Rebecca Barnes, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Scranton Human Relations Commission. Reverend Barnes' five-year term will begin August 25th, 2023, and expire August 31st, 2028.
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes. I hereby declare that item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 276, 2023, reappointment of Karen Bazzari, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Scranton Library Authority. Karen Bazzari's four-year term will begin July 31st, 2023, and will expire July 31st, 2027.
As vice pres, I'm sorry, as vice chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 277, 2023, reappointment of Barbara O'Malley, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority. Barbara O'Malley's five-year term will begin August 23rd, 2023, and will expire August 31st, 2028.
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes. I hereby declare that item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, Resolution Number 278, 2023, reappointment of Ann Salerno, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Scranton Library Authority. Ann Salerno's four-year term will begin July 31st, 2023, and will expire July 31st, 2027.
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second.
On the question? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes. Yes. I hereby declare item 7I legally and lawfully adopted.
7J, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, resolution number 279, 2023, reappointment of Ajaw Wintum, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Scranton Human Relations Commission. Ajaw Wintum's five-year term will begin August 25th, 2023, and will expire August 31st, 2028.
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7J.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7J legally and lawfully adopted.
7K, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, resolution number 280, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Muffelhun to perform community health and safety landscape analysis for the City of Scranton.
Um, as, as vice chairperson for this Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7J.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jesus, I'm sorry. All right. What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety last night?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7K.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, um, so, um, what I've gotten out of this after I read, uh, I guess it's about 170 pages long, but most of it was about the bidding. But, um, this is, um, basically an analysis to advise the city and OECD and the police department on gang activity in our city and how to deal with it and its long-term effects it will have on our city. Um, from everything I've learned about this and, and speaking with the chief, Carol, today, um, i- it seems that the last resort seems to be to throw everything onto, um, the lap of the police department. Um, our, our police officers are not counselors and, and they're not therapists and, and nor are they trained, um, to handle this type of, of therapy that, that these people may need. Um, our, our police department has been doing a great job to date, but it, it should not be all their responsibility all the time. Um, so I, I hope this analysis is going to identify what organizations, um, that are available, what help is available, and, and really what pieces are we missing, um, to, to complete this and, and make us, um, maybe pursue a better way to inform our children. Um, it seems our kids today, um, even before they reach middle school, um, are already involved in gang activity. So, um, we, we need to do better at, um, at reaching them before, um, they actually get involved with gangs. So, um, I, I believe this, um, analysis will provide us with this, um, information. Uh, so I will be in favor of this resolution.
Anyone else?
On the question, so I brought it up when this was originally in fifth order. So, with the ARPA money, um, $500,000 was allocated for mental health services. Um, $100,000 was, uh, directed towards this, um, project, I guess, if you will. And it's going to be about $70,000 of that $100,000 that's going to be spent. Um, with, um, now, I am under the impression that the, um, motion to receive a copy of the, the, this company's initial report passed. Am I correct on that one?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so, that study came out to the city in August of '22. Um, I, I've looked at, um, there was a, a House Subcommittee that spoke to this group, and they, um, went on to say that this study was provided to the city, um, and that they worked with the city to co-develop the plan that came out of this study. Um, this was news to me, as I only saw it last week. Um, but with it being said that we have requested this document, I would like to make a motion to table, um, to fully review this study before we move with spending this $70,000 of mental health funding on, uh, on this threat assessment. So I make a motion to table.
Second. On the question? All those in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those that don't?
No.
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 All right. Well, I'm just going to say, I do feel that's a mistake. This was a perfect opportunity to, um, take a look at this company's, um, work to see, uh, if it was something that we wanted to move forward with. So, I, I feel sorry that we lost out on, um, a total review of this company's services.
Okay, so, uh, anybody else on the question?
On the question, on, uh, this piece of legislation, this was also part of the conversation that we had with, with Chief Carroll earlier. And I believe there was someone who, uh, mentioned it during citizens' participation tonight, too, as to, um, you know, what, what he thought about this or what they could be, uh, doing better to address crime in the city and, and gang activity. And, um, he believes that this is one of the ways that they can do that and that this would be helpful and resourceful to them and to the police department. Uh, I think it's easy to just say, well, why can't they just do, you know, do the work and, and why do we need a contractor? But sometimes it's just, um, not possible with the, maybe the, the capacity that you have or needing some, some further expertise on it. So, um, yeah, I'm in favor of this contract. I think that if we want to work on crime in, in the city, I think this is, uh, one step and, and one way that we could be able to do that, and I'm supportive of it.
Also on the question, um, it was mentioned tonight in public comment that government should be conducted in public and not in secret. Um, I did request this document over a week ago. It has not been provided to me. Um, I guess it appears that, um, others have met to review the document. It was said that it was 170 pages. I'm, I'm not sure if all those pages have been reviewed, but, um, again, I would like to say, I would have liked to have reviewed this company's work prior to me agreeing to this contract.
Okay, so on the question, so, how are we supposed to make an informed decision on a, a, a new contract with this company where they won't show us what they did a year ago? Their performance, what they actually did? How do we make an informed decision on, based on information they won't give us? All right? Secondly, I have an issue with that, of course. Uh, but secondly, we have a very competent, professional police department. One of the best, one of the best in, one of the best in the Commonwealth, right? Bar none, right? So, um, and also, in addition to that, pri, during the primary election, The Times posed questions to candidates and said, you know, what's the biggest issue facing the city? So I was like, you know, blight and crime at this time. And, and, you know, well, how, what would you do to try to rectify it? So, my response was, okay, there's gang activity. We all know it's here. My response was, we need the police department and the state police to develop a task force, work in tandem to address the, the gang issue and, and the increased crime. I don't need to throw money at another consultant from Washington. Now they're calling it analysis? Everything else was called studies. So, you know, the studies keep coming down. We, you know, so they don't want to use the word "study" anymore, but, um, I don't, that money could be spent somewhere else. And since that they would not allow us to see their past performance last year on their other analysis, the study, um, I took a peek at the company, right? Their focus, and that's scary. Then I didn't see the word "gang" mentioned anywhere in any of the work they do. What I did see was, their focus is domestic terrorism, extremist behavior. I, I don't think that's a problem here. There is a problem with gangs. I believe the police in tandem with the task force, with the state police, but laser beam focused, could handle this here. I want to rely on expertise within the area. Every time there's something, a problem, we, we have to get consultants, we have to get studies, we have to send all of, all of this work out to other states, other cities, other, Jesus, pretty soon it'll be countries. So with that said, I'm definitely voting no for this. Okay.
On the question?
Roll, roll.
I will be supporting this, uh, this evening because our police chief, uh, absolutely supports this, and I have the utmost faith in our police chief.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Sorry, one, one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question. Um, also with my request of that initial report or, uh, assessment, was I wanted to see some of the recommendations that came out of that. What happens here and what, what was, um, in the backup documentation on this is they're going to make recommendations. Most of these recommendations are probably going to be with outside agencies that are not under the city's purview. They're agencies that are not employed by the city. So I, I would have liked to have seen some of the examples of these recommendations to see if these are things that could have been done and could have been followed through on. My, my fear here is that we spend money on a project that we cannot enforce the recommendations, but I just wanted to see examples of previous recommendations.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Motion passes.
7L, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, resolution number 281, 2023, authorizing the director of the Department of Public Works of the City of Scranton to sign and submit the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation application for traffic signal approval for traffic signal at Cherry Street and Shimf Court, associated with Scranton Counseling Center, to further improve the safety of pedestrian crossing.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7L. Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes. I hereby declare 7L legally and lawfully adopted.
7M, formerly 6A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, filed a council number 80, 2023, amending the city's open burn prohibition to explicitly allow the, an exception for public demonstration under certain conditions.
I'm sorry, wait. For consideration, oh, you're, I lost my place here. So this is, after it's read. Dr. Rothschild?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7M.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No. I hereby declare item 7M legally and lawfully adopted.
7N, previously tabled, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, filed a council number 62, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the City of Scranton to take all necessary actions to implement the HUD 2023 Annual Action Plan for Community Planning and Development Programs to be funded under the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, Home Investment Partnership Home Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants, ESG Program, for the period beginning January 1st, 2023.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7N.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Eighth Order 8A, filed a council number 64, 2023.
This ordinance is creating overtime reporting requirements for all city departments and employees. It has been tabled until we receive additional information from the administration. Um, council will recess for the month of August and meetings will resume on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. If there is no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is ended.